Good evening. Welcome to Olentangie Local Schools Board of Education. This is a regular meeting, and that is a really loud microphone. I don't need one. Today's Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017 at 6:00 PM. We're in the Olentangie Administrative Offices Berlin Room. We could call to order and get a roll call, please.
Mrs. Beesel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Mr. Barts?
Here. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I'd like to approve the agenda. First of all, are there any comments on this evening's agenda? Any changes, anything we need to address? Okay, with Ms. Hatfield, do you call? Do we get a motion, please, in a second?
I'll move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Beesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. Barts?
Yes. So without further ado, and with all due respect to our special guests who are here this evening, the presentation of the, since we just started breaking ground at Berlin High School, we're going to learn about the high school mascot in colors from Principal Spinner. Please.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Superintendent Rafe, President Barts, member of the Board of Education, Central Office staff, and members of the Olentangie community. I truly am honored to be standing here this evening. The opportunity for a principal to be able to do this is a dream come true. We've got a fantastic district with a great district leadership team and support staff. The bags that you are going to have in front of you, that you do not have in front of you right now...
We didn't want to tempt ourselves.
That's exactly right. We can trust you, but not that much. We're gonna wait, but the bags that you will have in front of you will have a brand-new shirt bearing the Olentangie Berlin colors, and the mascot. And the bag will have the mascot on it as well, so keep the bag face down, please, until you reach inside and get your shirt. There's a lot of directions. I will tell you that the mascot that you're going to see is just a rough draft, and I'd like to repeat that, it's just a rough draft. The mascot itself is what it is, but the drawing, it was a quick turnaround time, so it's a rough draft, so I don't want anybody to think that that is the official rendering. Roughly over a month ago, if I could, I'd like to go back and talk about the process a little bit, because I think that, I know that the Olentangie community was so excited about this process, and the board office, the district office did such a great job of involving the entire community. Roughly over a month ago, a survey link was sent out to everybody, every member of the Olentangie community, and we had roughly 2,500 responses. What a great turnout for the interest in regards to the mascot and the colors. Next, we took those responses and we narrowed it down to 25 of the mascot choices. The colors are a little fewer, there's only so many colors in the rainbow. We narrowed those down to 10. That next time, we took it, and we took a link and we sent it out to the Berlin families, those folks that would be heading to Berlin High School. And we asked them to narrow that down to 10 for the mascots and four for the colors. The survey asked them to think about the historical relevance for the mascot, and also think about how the color choices, how could we make Berlin its own? How could we go ahead and make sure that, just like the Braves, just like the Patriots, and just like the pioneers, we had our own colors? How could we do that? Once those results were in, Mr. Betts and myself met with the incoming Berlin students twice, two separate meetings, because we know that all of our students are involved in many, many things. So we had a 10 o'clock meeting, and we had a 7:00 PM meeting to make sure that we had a great cross-section of our student body that was gonna head to Berlin High School. Awesome. You'd have been so proud of the things that they said. The historical facts and figures that they were throwing out, and because I'm an English major, I couldn't refute those, so I hope they were correct. But a lot of great things were said by our students, and our parents were so excited. I asked them about nine times to not speak during the presentation, because it was for the students, but they couldn't help themselves, so they even asked some questions. Go figure. It was an awesome day. We went ahead and had them vote for their favorite three choices for the mascot and favorite two for the colors. Once we gathered those results, the district leadership team, along with the Berlin administrators, used all available feedback from students to bring us where we are this evening. With all of that being said, my trusted athletic director, Mr. Betts, is charged with putting those bags mascot down.
Okay, we're gonna close our eyes.
We did the best we could with sizing, so we have additional shirts if we need to go ahead and make some changes. And I would ask that, once again, everybody in attendance, and as well as the Board of Education and Central Office, remember that our community did an awesome job thinking about the historical relevance in regards to the first high school, and also to the fact that they wanted to go ahead and make Olentangie Berlin, and the colors really, really special for our students. So this was something that truly is remarkable. We're very, very proud of what we've come up with together as a community. So at this time, on the count of three, on the count of three...
I think we hold them up for the photo shoot.
Oh. Well, what we wanted to do was flip it so that the opening is towards you, and then, we rehearsed this earlier, although you weren't here. So on the count of three, if you could reach into your bag, one...
Wait, wait, wait. I don't feel anything. I think it's in the zipper.
Two layers. This was really a lot of effort. This shows our ability to be super-nervous.
Go on to the gray part.
One...
Oh, 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 there's two.
It's the main opening. There we go. Now we're cooking with gas. One, two, three. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to present the Berlin Bears.
All right. Very nice.
The whole community did a great job, because that honors the original high school, which were the Bears, and then the blue and the light blue, and I'm gonna use the word pops, because it truly does. If you've ever seen that on any type of uniform, that light blue really makes it pop, and so I think our community and the students did a great job. So, once again, thank you so much for allowing me to be here this evening.
Do you want a quick photo op, Devin?
Ooh.
Photo op.
That's my daughter, man. She was wanting to know. That's awesome. Where do you want it?
Oh, look at that. We have a banner.
She thinks everything.
There you go. Just fresh off the bat, so... Do you know Bonnie Cozy, whose land this is on? This, she is in the office.
What's the original high school?
Yep.
Emily, I'm gonna need you to squeeze in a little bit more.
Emily, come on by.
Emily, come over here. There we go.
Round out the...
Okay, now Mark, I need you to squeeze in.
I'm behind.
Oh, come on. We're gonna get that. Smile. One, two, three. You wanna take more of those? Smile. One, two, three. Thank you.
Somebody needs to collect their items.
Yes. I need you to leave the mission. Wait. So let's just...
Awesome.
Yeah, Mr. Puckler's one of your parents. Yeah.
Well, thank you, Mr. Spinner, Mr. Betts. It's a great, a great start for Berlin, and great stuff to come. With that, now we're gonna turn it over to Mr. Meyer, who has a staffing update for this year.
Okay, good evening. And, Mr. Spinner, Mr. Betts, congratulations on exciting mascot and colors. One thing you can check off, and then soon, we're gonna get to staffing Berlin, so we'll start the staffing process for Berlin in October, okay? So that'll be included in next year's report. So for this year, want to go over the 17-18 staffing update. And so again, sources of highly qualified candidates. Typically, this for certified staff, our staffing process starts right after winter break, in January. So the first thing I put on there is Olentangie reputation, and again, I can't tell you how many people even ask when they fill out applications as far as getting into Olentangie, but let alone just getting an interview in Olentangie. So we have a great reputation, which obviously allows us to attract qualified candidates to the district. We have an internal job posting web link, because by contract, we post all jobs internally, and then also District External Job Board. And if you can remember from last year, we have really over 6,000 applications in our external job board, but what I wanted to do is I wanted to clean that up, and we took the number, in the last 18 months, how many new applications did applicants did we have apply within the last 18 months? So that's the number, 2,693 in the last 18 months, and we're gonna keep that as a process point for us, the 18 months. Other external job boards include Ohio Department of Education, and some of our associations, the Elementary Association, Secondary Association, as well as others. Really, a big thing that we do, the Olentangie Certified Interview Day, we hold that typically the week before spring break in March every year. So last year, we had roughly a little over 150 applicants come to that day, and that's highly sought-after as well. We have a lot of applicants reach out to us who want to be invited to the Certified Interview Day, but we only have so many spots in the day to interview so many people, and we bring all of our principals in. The last couple of years, we've done it at Liberty High School. We set up in the Olive Gym, and then we interview the applicants through the day. Also, university career fairs. This has been a charge from our diversity subcommittee to increase our presence at job fairs across the state, so we've increased the last three years. In last spring, we attended 16 university career fairs across the state, and actually one out of state. Also then, historically, Black College and Universities Careers Magazine, that's, we promote job openings from Olentangie through that magazine, and one neat feature that we added this year is, through the magazine, any job that we post on our external job board, they also then send it out in their network. So it then allows us to obviously reach more people. District Diversity Committee referral program, that's a referral program we have through our diversity committee, where they can refer diverse candidates to our office. Couple of things that we did with that last year, you remember, we have community nights, a couple of community nights each year, so at the second one last year, we actually passed some of those forms out last year. And then obviously through student teachers, certified substitutes, and then that last bullet, our A candidate list, when we have applicants apply through the district, they get put on the A candidate list if we wanna move them forward in the interview process. So we fill that list from our Certified Interview Day, of course, and then the career fairs, and then throughout the year, because that is an excellent resource for our principals then when we create, when we have vacancies in the district. And just a couple of highlights, same thing with classified. What we do with classified a little, or additionally, we reach out to social media, classified newspapers, flyers, and signage, and really word-of-mouth really helps with our classified folks. And I, we did clean up the external job board there, so we have currently 934 online applicants over the last 18 months. I will tell you, you know, it's still a challenge with some of our classified groups, bus drivers in particular, but we've done a really good job, a concerted effort the last couple of years of attracting bus drivers and keeping that, keeping basically the routes full and keeping that pool of candidates in the pipeline, but it's a challenge. So those are some of the things. And then we do, Classified Interview Days, we do more than just one, so throughout the year, three or four that we advertise and have here at the district office, okay? Staff induction, this is one thing that I think Olentangie does exceptionally well. A big, I think, metric in the retention is basically how we support staff in any school district. And here in Olentangie, I can tell you, we support staff better than any district that I know and for sure where I've been. So that starts with a welcome to Olentangie, congratulatory telephone call from my office, and Mr. Rafe talks about a big district, and how we continue to make a big district feel small with over 20,000 students and 2,400 employees. I can't tell you how many people, again, appreciate just that personal touch of a welcome phone call from my office congratulating our new employees to the district. We then hold a small group employee orientation, so we bring them in. This summer, I think we did three or four different small groups orientation here at the central office. New this year, and part of the digital conversion goal for Mr. Rafe, we've gone electronic as far as onboarding, so all of our onboarding with our new employees is electronic now. So we're pushing the paper really out the door, and we're getting rid of the paper, and we've gone electronic, and actually, this first year, that's gone really, really well. New Teacher Academy, and again, this is part of the staff induction, and our curriculum department puts three days of just outstanding orientation and acclimation to Olentangie, and really, what Olentangie is, and again, welcoming those teachers into the district. And then it doesn't stop there, because we have building-level orientations that all of our buildings then bring their new teachers in, new employees in, and help acclimate them to their buildings. We have a strong mentorship program, strong partnership with our three associations, so our association presidents and associations wrap their hands around and embrace our new employees, which really, really helps. New last year, Mr. Wright, under the leadership of Mr. Wright, started the administrative leadership cohorts. So again, those are smaller groups and cohorts that we meet throughout the school year and work on leadership. So it's a lot of positive feedback from our administrators last year going through that program. And of course, evaluation process, I don't wanna forget that, because that's extremely important, how we evaluate our staff throughout the year, and then obviously, as administrators, provide continuous feedback to our teachers and staff. So with that, resignations and retirements. Certified staff last year, 27 resignations and seven retirements. It's approximately 2.6 percent. So I think that's a pretty good attrition rate right there, 2.6 percent from our certified staff. You can see then, we go up administrators, we had eight resignations, zero retirements, and then classified, 53 resignations and 21 retirements. So that's a little higher. It's, I think it was about 9.8 percent. So we got caught up, I think, last year because of the date, the 2017 date, with the retirement system with some of our classified folks and their age, so we did see an uptick in retirements last year. New staff members employed, certified, 81, and this goes back to what I talked about in that first slide there, 52 percent from the A candidate list. And so again, that's a really valuable resource to our administrators, creating that pool and putting candidates on that list. And then, again, this is always a good data point. Eight Olentangie district graduates, so former students who are now teachers in Olentangie, so we're proud of that. Administrators, we hired 15 new administrators, and if you can remember, we had eight resignations, but we added administrators in the technology department, custodial supervisor, my assistant director in my office, and I think... What's that?
People's services.
People's services, you're right. Okay, and people's services, but...
Berlin.
And of course, yes. Can't forget these two. Nine out of 15 promoted from within, so again, I think that's a good job of identifying in our organization, leadership qualities in others where we can promote from within, and we see something in them. So that's a great metric, I think, for us as an organization, and really, kudos to Mr. Rafe, because Mr. Rafe, I think, really puts high priority in recognizing talent within the organization and promoting from within. Then classified, we hired 47, and we had one Olentangie district graduate in our classified group, okay? Certified budget, so I wanted to add this slide, because of the 81 teachers, we use a budget metric of a master step three, which is $50,278. So the average salary of all new teachers across those 81 came in under budget at $47,169. And of the 81 new teachers hired, 46.83, and that's FTE. So we calculate the certified in FTE, that's based on time in the classroom, so if we have a .5, a halftime teacher, that's a .5 FTE. So, or 58 percent were for growth, and the average cost of our growth positions, because we break it down too, then we just take from the total, and then also just in our growth, that same metric, and then we came in at $50,043. And then average years of experience for new teachers hired, 3.8. So overall, in the district, FTE certified, 1467, 788 classified, 97 FTE administrators from the ESC, 166 positions, and then substitutes, we have 632 certified substitutes, and again, those substitutes are hired through the ESC, so they've designated Olentangie as a district they want to sub in. And actually, that number will continue to climb over the next month, and I wouldn't be surprised if it gets to over 1,000. And then 286, and what we do with classified subs, at the end of every year, if you subbed in our district last year, we send an intent letter to the sub to ask them if they plan on coming back as a substitute for the next school year. So we received 286 letters back. And then total staff members would be 2480 in the district. Okay. Questions?
The staffing broken down by grade level?
Do I have it broken? Yes, yes.
Just for something else I'm...
Okay. So I have, I don't have it with me?
Yeah. That just as a follow-up. So where we ended last year by grade level, and where we started this year by grade level?
Okay.
That'll be helpful.
I have a question. Last year, I think, when you presented to us, you talked and showed us some of the advertisements, the classified ads and things you're putting in the magazines. I think we all agreed that they needed a dramatic upgrade, they needed to be rebranded. Have you done that, and can you provide those maybe to us?
Yes, yes.
So we can see those?
Yes, the answer is yes. We don't have the actual magazines, so we worked with Krista's office, and redid that ad. So when we get it, absolutely, we'll make sure that you get a copy of it. So, yeah, because that was a question that you guys had and wanted us to look at that, so we did do that, yes.
Good. Other questions?
I have two questions. One is tracking retirement trends, because I was surprised that only seven retired this year. I'm talking teachers.
Teachers, right.
So do we track the retirement trends? Because we had been shown, and I think it was Greg Scott who did it for us, the retirement trends...
That's been a long time ago.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
We haven't been engaging in it for five years.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking to see...
So we can start to track this, but Mr. Rafe had me get this data point. So we have, so one to three teacher, one to three years experience, 10 percent; four to nine years experience, 23 percent; 10 to 20 years experience, 53 percent; 20 to 30, 13 percent, so it drops significant. And then over 30, we have 14 certified, 1 percent. So...
Yeah, there's...
You can see where that, in that 10 to 20 years, so...
You know, a good follow-up to see how that, that's change over the last several years.
Okay.
Because that has implications.
Yeah. And then my second question was, in preparation for next year, people assume, oh, you're opening a new school, you're gonna be hiring on new teachers, but that's not necessarily the case, because the majority of those kids are already in the district. So, you know, when those kids go, so do some of those teachers. So do you have a ballpark of how many you're, how many new teachers you're looking for, for particularly Berlin, but if you know for next year?
So in the forecast, we have 51 teachers for the district, and I think we, I wanna say 30, a little, maybe 30, 31 for Berlin, but you're exactly right. We will have shift, that's why we're starting the process so early in October. So we'll start with an internal process, and so we'll transfer teachers who apply and they select, we'll transfer internally. So what happens is, there's a domino effect of where those openings actually end up. So that's one reason we wanna start early, and then obviously, we'll work through that process, and we'll continue to monitor enrollment, and then we'll also continue to monitor in the high schools' course registration.
Target mix when you open a building? A target mix of kind of existing resource versus new? I mean, you wouldn't wanna open it with all new, and probably the extremes, you wouldn't wanna open it with all existing, so it's...
Right.
Target some mix?
Right. So my, I'm just going back on my, when I opened Orange High School, I was probably 60-40, mixed between current and then new. So current, 60 percent, and then 40 percent new. Because you're right, because, you know, it's important, I think, as the administration works through the hiring process, that they bring, the people, that hiring process is gonna be extremely important, that they bring people in that's gonna help build that culture with the school community, so extremely important.
And you had a good mix, you know? It wasn't just because of the majority of kids were coming from Olentangie to open Orange. You had, you know, teachers throughout the district that were filling those internal positions.
Exactly. And internally, by contract, we'll post those internally, so we, anybody can apply. So we'll have some middle school teachers who apply, who wanna move up to the high school, so we'll kinda work through that process throughout the year. And our goal is really to be, to have Berlin staff by spring break, because there's a tremendous amount of work that still needs to be done from spring break, obviously going into opening those doors.
Yeah, and, you know, depending, obviously, most of the kids are, all the kids going to Berlin are currently attending Olentangie High School, so the majority of the staff will have to, as we balance out the enrollment and staffing at Olentangie High School, but the reality is that we'll probably have to move people out of Olentangie, either to Orange, or Liberty, or Middle School, or something, because of where the staffing needs are. And right now, Mr. Spinner and Mr. Betts are very popular.
Exactly.
I have one more question.
I have one too. Not that Betts wasn't ever unpopular.
Yeah, that's true. So to piggyback on what Kevin and Julie said about the impact of the teachers and salaries and things over time, are you able to do any predictive look at, based on what STRS is doing and when they offer retirement, the amount of money? Does that help you predict at all when folks, because we had that wave, what, two years ago? When they changed it from, what was it, 33 to 35 years to get your maximum retirement, so you had to get out then?
And then a age requirement.
Right, and an age requirement. So are you able to do any predict, I'm just asking a question, if that would help us as we look at budgets and ongoing costs and things like that?
I would say, as looking at it, I mean, we could do that. The significant change with STRS is that if you can't retire prior to the year 2026, you have to have, it used to be 30 years experience in any age, and now it is 35 years experience and be 60. So we, I don't necessarily, like, we've got their ages and experiences and all those things, or we have their experiences, we have to calculate their ages and then see when that eligibility...
I mean, I don't want you to go on a snipe hunt, but I don't know if that would help, if that's something you can, because of the changes, that gives you a feel for...
There's gonna be a lot of people working past 30 now. Now if it helps that bubble at the tender...
Because, yeah, right now, like Mr. Rafe said, that last year, 2026, you can retire at 35 and 58, and then you have to go till 60 after that, so that's the last cohort group, I guess.
Which does put a burden on our district, on districts, because now people are working longer, earning higher salaries longer.
Right. So I'll look more, I'll look more into that and see if there's...
She's gonna scream. She's going, "Why, why, why, no one's letting her talk."
When we go through the budgeting process, when we work with Todd's office, and we look at salaries, when we're going through the May budgeting process, we also, as the Treasury's department, look at that retirement figure and budget that in our benefits section. So we're looking at folks, you know, over time, what have, what does that dollar amount look like? How many folks have been in that retirement, and what those severance payments are? So we could probably pull some more information, but we're looking at it in that regard as well.
I just wonder if we're heading towards another bubble or something that's, maybe it's gonna push our cost higher, but just, yeah, whatever you can provide. I know, Mindy, you had a question?
Yeah, I, and maybe I'm premature in asking this, because it seemed like last year, when you presented, you broke...
Which does put a burden on our district, on districts, because now people are working longer, earning higher salaries longer.
Right. Right. So I'll look more, I'll look more into that and see if there's...
As you...
She's going, "Let her talk."
When we go through the budgeting process, when we work with Todd's office and we look at salaries, when we're going through the May budgeting process, we also, as the Treasurers' Department, look at that retirement figure and budget that in our benefits section. So we're looking at folks, you know, over time, what have, what does that dollar amount look like? How many folks have been in that retirement and what those severance payments are? So we could probably pull some more information, but we're looking at it in that regard as well.
I just wondered if we're heading towards another bubble or something that's, maybe it's going to push our cause higher, but just, yeah, whatever you can provide. I know, Mindy, you had a question?
Yeah, I, and maybe I'm premature in asking this, because it seemed like last year, when you presented, you broke it down by diversity? Like, our diversity population in comparison to the teachers? Do you have that information, or is that to come later?
No, I have, so this year, I talked about some of the diversity efforts, obviously. So what's happened is, we didn't get the return that we were hoping for as far as hiring. So, and our classifieds is .05% in classified diverse hires last year, so that's the percentage. And certified, we have zero reported. Now, I do want to say that that's a voluntary form that we ask all of our employees, they fill out, and it's voluntary whether they fill it out or not, that designates race and ethnicity. And if they don't fill it out, then they're unqualified, so they don't count in, in that percentage. So, you know, that's, that's where we are right now. But, you know, that's not for the lack of trying either.
I know it's a big effort.
Right, absolutely.
An ongoing effort.
Yeah, and we're, ongoing effort, and we're going to continue to work out of our office and with our diversity groups to create strategies to try to recruit quality diverse candidates.
I was just wondering if it's paying off yet? Keep going.
We are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Good stuff, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
With that, and the Board's present report is to remind everyone that tonight we do have an executive session at the end of, we will go into executive session at the end of the meeting. We will only be coming back to the boardroom to adjourn. First of all, I want to, in my report, very briefly, tonight, I want to thank Mrs. Patrick for picking up some of the slack for me on what's been a brutal travel month. I'm hoping it will level out, who knows? But I appreciate that, so thank you, Mindy.
You're welcome.
And then I also wanted to thank the staff for another good start to the year. I think the only thing I've seen is a little bit of fussing and whining on social media about pickup and drop-off lanes and the group of parents that believe that their time is more important than anybody else's time. So whatever we can do to address safety issues, and if you need board members to volunteer from time to time to stand out there with signs that say "Stop," I'll let you know when I have time available. But with that, I will turn it over then to Mr. Rafe for the superintendent's report.
Yeah, the middle, the middle schools probably are the biggest challenge.
Race tracks? There are a lot of middle school parents who'd like to pick their children up, so... Well, good evening, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here, and thanks again to Mr. Spinner and Mr. Betts on a great effort in getting us our mascot in colors for Berlin High School. As echoing Mr. Barts, we did, I think, had a very smooth start to the school year. Welcome back to over 20,000 K-12 students and other 466 preschool students. And again, compliments to Mr. Gordon and the staff for getting the new Olentangie Shanahan Preschool, OSP on the list. Honestly, I didn't, I didn't see it, and I didn't know what it was, so I had to ask somebody when you sent that question, Kevin. So thank you, thank you for asking it. So far, in the first three days alone, the Food Services Department served over 28,000 meals, and actually, something sort of trying new this year is they're making fresh-made pizza in all three high schools instead of ordering it in. So they are actually making it fresh. And it's, I think by all accounts, I've heard good, good feedback from the high school students. And again, kudos to the Transportation Department, over 2,300 bus routes completed in the first three days safely, thank goodness. I know we're thankful, we're working out some kinks with transportation, and if we can get some of the roads open around here, I'm sure it'd go a lot smoother, but I know they're working as fast as they can. If you caught this on social media, but one of our students, Emily Miller at Liberty High School, was featured on the Today Show. She's making backpacks. I read the article, it sounds really interesting, and they can change up the colors, and, but again, just an example of the quality people we have here in the district. So we'll be looking forward to our IPO someday. At the OSBA Fall Conference coming up, we have three people being honored. Sorry to get this first, Emily, but Katie Bowser, who is Lead Assistant in the Treasurers' Department, has been named our exemplary employee. Katie's been with us for a long time. So she does a great job. Emily Truitt Robinson is our Friend of Public Education. Emily works tirelessly with OEF and a member of OFK and anywhere and everywhere throughout the district. And as you're aware, John Juravich has been named the Ohio Teacher of the Year for District Six. There are 12 districts in the state, so they named the Teacher of the Years in every district, and John was one of five teachers chosen as a finalist. So we're anxiously awaiting word from the Ohio Department of Education on whether or not John has been awarded the State Teacher of the Year. A couple, obviously, the discussion items, we had already the discussion of the high school mascot in colors. Following me, Krista will be coming up to talk about our new strategic plan. And then Emily and Mr. Lamb is back to talk about a proposed CRA and TIF for the Creekside Industrial Park Project, which it's exciting to be talking about commercial development in the district. Couple agenda items of note for you. As all usual, we have to approve the bus routes and stops for the 2017-18 school year, our annual event. And then we have a list of students that were declaring transportation impractical. And then finally, our next meeting is September 14th, back here in our newly carpeted boardroom.
There's no stains.
Yeah, it's nice. Questions? All right. Are you ready for this? Here we go. She's joining me at the podium.
[laughing]
I have stuff to talk about, so...
No, I'll try not to throw the remote across the room this time. So thank you, Mr. Rafe, for bringing forward the Treasurers' presentation, instilling a little bit of thunder. I do want to give Katie a little more props, so to speak, for being nominated Exemplary Employee of the Year for OSBA. I'm really excited for her. She is a great contributor to our department, and I'd like to read you a few comments off the recommendation letter that we put together for her. She helps with our, in our district, with our continuous enrollment growth, has led to, as we all know, construction of over a dozen buildings, growing numbers of staff, increased volumes in requisitions, purchase orders, vendors, and check processing, just to name a few things. Katie has successfully navigated all of this change in growth. She has a wonderful institutional knowledge, and she helps train new staff members as they come to the district outside of our department and even within our department, especially if we, as we have transitioned Treasurers and Assistant Treasurers within the last year. She has an excellent ethic that motivates her to perform at a high level. She's a consummate professional and models quality leadership for all of us. And she is genuinely a positive and caring person. And for these reasons, we've nominated her for the OSBA Exemplary Employee of the Year. Katie will be recognized at that Fall Conference in September, on September 27th, so congratulations to Katie. We also wanted to give an update on the 2017 real property tax reappraisal. Currently, Delaware County is going through the reappraisal process for residential assessed valuation. We've confirmed with the Delaware County that a 10% growth is the overall percentage rate or the average percentage rate for Delaware County this year. So what that means in terms of additional tax dollars for the five-year forecast, it will generate about $215,000 for fiscal year 2018 and about $430,000 in each year remaining, because we'll have, the first year we'll have half a tax year collection, and the remaining years we'll have full year collection. This is not quite as robust as you would think. We had planned for 6%, and so seeing a 10% evaluation number makes people think of a larger number. So why is that? That it's not, doesn't have such a greater impact? And that's because the evaluation, the assessed valuation affects our inside millage, our five inside mills, not our entire effective millage rate. So we'll see that 10% growth on the inside mills, but the outside mills, because of House Bill 920, that piece of legislation says that the voted millage is assigned to a valuation or amount, a total dollar of collections. When we have valuation increases, it takes that effective millage rate and it rolls it back so that we don't continue to collect additional tax dollars, tax dollars than we voted for in the community. So it won't necessarily mean a large increase in tax bills for our residents. So we wanted to kind of have that discussion and talk about that, so we have a better understanding of how that will impact them individually. What we did put together also is the tax cost for $100,000 property valuation. I apologize, this is a little small on the side screen, but what this represents is the tax bill for residents based on $100,000 property valuation. So the county takes the fair market value, they give an assessed valuation rate of 35%. On that, we take our effective millage rate, which gives the tax dollar. Now, on voted millage rates that were passed prior to 2014, there's a homestead and rollback credit that applies. So on our effective millage rate, the .05204 represents the portion of voted effective millage that was prior to that 2014 date. So the homestead and rollback credit is applied. The second half of that calculation shows the new voted millage that we had from our 2016 levy, which doesn't get the credit applied to it. That calculation shows the $240 owed on the new millage rates, which totals the total tax owed of 1833. So as a homeowner, if you're trying to assess what happened to my property valuation and where am I going to land with my tax bill, you're going to look at the 1833 figure, and you're going to look at the valuation of your house. So for a $350,000 home, you would take the 1833 times the three and a half, right? Because we're looking at $100,000 valuation, and can go through that calculation to look at your estimated tax due. So also tonight, as Mr. Rafe mentioned, we have Bob Lamb here, our Director of Delaware County Economic Development, to talk about a CRA and TIF proposal. So we're excited to get an update on that. And we also have several treasurer action items tonight. We have the June 2017 financials, which are before the board for approval. We landed the fiscal year, or ended the fiscal year right around where we thought we would be as compared to the May forecast. We had $378,000 more in revenue than projected and about $58,000 more in expenditures than projected. But overall, we're very excited that we landed right where we thought we would be, so that's a, that's a great place to be. Our July 2017 financials are also for your approval tonight. We do have a slight increase in our purchase services over budget, but it, that appears to be a timing issue at this point, having some bills come forward a little faster than previously anticipated. But overall, I think we're on track to land where we think we're going to be within budget for the year. Mindy, did you have a question? Okay, I'm sorry. We also have amended appropriations before the board tonight. Most notably, our fiscal year '18 federal grant dollars. When we compile our 2018 budgets, we are working in June of the previous year, so we're trying to predict what our rollover amounts might be on our federal grants as well as predicting the future awards. So we have to make some adjustments to get those back into alignment, but overall, in a positive direction for appropriations. We have a couple of donations as well. We'd like to thank Kennedy France of Boy Scouts of America for donating an outdoor reading area to Cheshire Elementary. And we also like to thank Olentangie Liberty Athletic Boosters, who donated just over $850 for a girls' assistant tennis coach. We thank our community for continued support in all donations that are monetary as well as those that are time and effort. We also have a Mount Carmel Health Systems contract. This is a renewal for our wellness services that we have with the organization. They came in and did a presentation for the board in July to update how the program is going. We're happy with those results and continue to move those forward in a positive direction, so we're bringing their contract back as an annual renewal. We also have approval for revisions to the OASBO Section 457 Plan. So this is a opportunity for the school district employees to participate in a 457 pre-tax retirement contribution plan. OASBO is the sponsor of the plan. They have made design changes to their plan, and because we participate, we have to bring their new plan document to the board and have a formal approval process to make sure that we're compliant with regulations with IRS and with OASBO's administration policy. We also have on the table tonight the resolution for the issuance of the $5 million bond refunding. We have completed the bond rating process for that refunding. Positive reaction from both S&amp;P and Moody's. We'll have a final ratings information, a report from them by tomorrow. But preliminarily, we will keep our AAA rating with S&amp;P, and we have a AA1 with Moody's with a positive outlook. They continue to point towards pension liabilities and towards debt. I know the pension liability is...
We have a rollover.
I know. It is a frustrating aspect of how they put together their rating process, because that pension liability is not within our control. However, they are continuing to look at us in a positive light and are continuing to hold us at that level where we, we have the potential to move forward into a double, AAA, excuse me. So we'll look for their final reports to get the final analysis and can give an update once we have that finalized, but that's preliminary where we think we'll be. We will have pricing on that on August 30th, with the closing scheduled for September 27th. And again, we anticipate about $800,000 savings in interest costs, and we'll have the final number of that savings once we get to the pricing meeting. It was a lot of information all at once. Are there any questions or anything I can go back through for you guys? Thank you.
Do we have any general comments for public participation session number one?
No, we do not.
So move right into discussion items. First of all, welcome Krista Davis, who's going to talk about the strategic plan.
Good evening, everyone. So, I know there's been so much excitement already tonight, and I thought the next biggest thing we could talk about was the strategic plan.
I'll present with you.
So there are always perceptions about strategic planning, not any of them really exciting. So I thought, oh, I will find a clip from the office to, you know, jazz it up a little bit. Turns out, they didn't even make fun of strategic planning in any of their episodes. So with that, you just get me. So why have a strategic plan? The reality is, it's not silly, it's not funny, but it's really important. It's not about the day-to-day operations, but about the strategy as we move Olentangie forward. It's a living document to guide us as we go forward, instead of just shooting in the How will a plan, strategic plan, help us? Well, all of us need to be working to execute the plan and to move, to continue to make Olentangie all it can be now and in the future. So it will help guide our work as departments, as buildings, as administrators, keeping our focus on our priorities. So the backstory about the strategic plan and why we are here today as a leadership team sharing our strategic plan is that you all gave us some direction on the desire to have a strategic plan for the district for the upcoming five to 10 years. And we really were excited to embrace that and look at what we could do with a strategic plan. So what we did was begin to look at some of our existing plans that we already have in the district. We have a lot of different plans out there. We have our continuous improvement plans, we have a five-year forecast, which is essentially a plan, we have a capital improvement plan, and we have many other plans in the district that we could go on and on, calling out all the different plans we have in our different departments, in our different... in our different buildings and areas to address future goals. So we looked at all of those, and then, the next important thing to look at when strategic planning is our mission. So about a year ago, the leadership team looked at our mission to facilitate maximum learning for every student, and we confirmed that this was still a relevant mission for Olin Tangi Local Schools, and one that we could really embrace and work towards moving our district forward toward. If you remember, about a year ago as well, we talked about a new vision statement for the district. Our existing vision statement that we had was exceptionally long and had a lot of content, and we knew that a vision statement should be more succinct and more direct about what we wanted to accomplish. So we established to be the recognized leader for performance and efficiency in education as our vision. But there were a lot of really important components we didn't want to lose in the previous vision statement. So we were able to create four values statements out of what was important from that existing vision statement. So we were able to carry forward, we respect and we care, we make sound decisions, we can always get better, and we partner at school and in the community. So with those, the mission, the vision, and our values, and our existing plans, we were able to really start talking about strategic planning. So when you're looking at strategic planning, there's kind of two directions you can take. Whoops. The first one is going from scratch, starting from just absolutely nothing, even creating a mission statement, a vision statement, and really talking to every member of the organization to see what we even want to do. Or curate from existing plans. So as I mentioned before, we have a lot of existing plans, and we have solid mission, vision, and values. And so at this point, we thought we really wanted to curate what we have and put it, and organize it in a succinct strategic plan. We also determined that the leadership team would be responsible for moving the plan forward. We are involving all of our departments, our building leadership, all of our key players, but the owners of the strategic plan, so to speak, will be the leadership team, and making sure we are going in the direction that we set forth for ourselves. So when building a strategic plan, kind of think of it as a hierarchy. So the very top, the most important part, are our strategic priorities. These are the things that we care about the very most of achieving. And then the goals are our big picture, the way that we can accomplish our priorities. Objectives are the ways that we will meet our goals. And then the strategies help that happen. And then the tactics are really with the strategies, both in the weeds, so to speak, to help you accomplish those, ultimately, those goals and those priorities. So it gets really down into the nitty-gritty, the details, and helps us evaluate and helps everyone understand their place in the bigger picture. It also, at this point in time, in the objectives and the strategies and tactics, helps us figure out how long something's going to take to accomplish, or how long we project that it will, and that is outlined in those areas. So our plan framework has four strategic priorities, and within those four priorities, we have 12 goals, and we have numerous objectives, strategies, and tactics to meet those goals. Someone once said to me that a strategic plan is more of a framework than a formula, and I think that's so true. It's the structure in which we are able to do the work that we need to do. It's not a one plus one equals two. It really is that framework that we can operate within. So with that, I'm going to share our strategic plan with you. I told Mark it was such a teacher thing, I didn't want you to see it before I talked And we'll talk about each of the pieces. What you have in front of you is what we are calling our one-pager about our strategic plan. It includes our strategic priorities and our goals, as well as our mission, vision, and values. So I'm going to move forward and share, talk about our strategic priorities a little bit. Before I talk about these four priorities, please know that we do not think that any one is more important than the other. They have equal value and equal importance to us. The first one, that we'll talk about, our students and stakeholders, obviously, this is who we care about. And if you remember, this goes back to our values. Who we care about is an important value to us. Our students and stakeholders, obviously, are those people. Resource stewardship is our next strategic priority. This is what we have, and we know that we need to be diligent in protecting that and taking care of that for the future. Our third priority are internal processes, and this is how we do things. So everything we do, we need to make sure we're doing it in the best way possible for Olin Tangi. And our fourth priority is learning and organizational development, and this is how we get better. It's how we get better as an organization, and most importantly, how we get better with our students. So again, our values are reflected within the strategic priorities. Then, just to talk about the goals, under students and stakeholders, we have developed alleviate barriers to learning, expand community engagement and relationships through partnerships and committees, and that might be the superintendent committees, the business advisory committee, all the ways in which we engage our community. And promote a culture of inclusive excellence. We talked a lot about the wording of these goals and the fact that what's important to know is that just because a word, or a phrase, or a buzzword isn't included in a goal that you see on this one-pager, it does not mean that it's not important to us. It means that it's included in one of the goals. So then we have resource stewardship, and our goals are to maximize investments in revenue, to manage our assets wisely, and to model fiscal responsibility and transparency. So I think those are pretty clear to what priority they go to and why they're so important. And then our next priority, internal processes, we will continue to implement a digital conversion, strive for a culture of operational excellence, and expand our talent management strategy with our staff.
Implement a digital conversion of kind of all the things on the page, that's the one that just feels like a project versus an actual strategy.
I think that's a great point you bring up. The idea here is that we're creating a digital culture. It's not just a project, it's pervasive throughout the organization.
It's more about leveraging technology wherever possible?
More about leveraging technology?
Yeah.
In everything that we do.
Wouldn't blended learning fall into this?
I think that could go into, you know, you bring up a great point, that some of this, like blended learning, could go into several areas. So we are going to, we have ensure mastery of learning coming up here under the fourth priority. And to your point, Kevin, I think that there are certain things that can fit in multiple areas that revolve around technology and leveraging technology.
Just giving my reaction, because when you, it's like, once you do a conversion, the conversion's over, versus having an ongoing effort to leverage technology wherever possible to be more efficient and have operational excellence.
And this might be an action inside of the goal, something someone's going to own as a responsibility, the way that it's worded. Is it supposed to say word?
Yeah.
Additionally, we will talk about what happens when a goal is accomplished here in a short bit, so we're going to just hold on to that for a second. Under learning and organizational development, we have establish our brand identity, ensure mastery of learning, and foster leadership development. So what does this mean for Olin Tangi Local School District? It provides clear direction for our work. It helps us to work as teams, to set those objective strategies and tactics we talked about, to accomplish those goals and meet those strategic priorities. And it gives us the ability to measure and evaluate our work progress and success. So to that point that you were just talking about, we will have quarterly reviews and metrics for each of these goals. So we may accomplish a certain amount of things and find that we need to review that goal or revise the goal as needed, as we look at what we've accomplished. Each of these goals will have three phases, and that will be delineated in the objectives. So the phases, you wouldn't obviously get to phase two until after you accomplish phase one, and then that will help us as we review those goals and assess, are they still, is this still a relevant goal? Do we need to change anything? Then obviously, we'll have the, how we'll talk about this is have this one-pager to share widely with our community and all of our stakeholders, that these are the things that the district prioritizes and the goals that we are working toward. And we'll share that in our quality profile this year, and we will talk about it in our department and team meetings as we go. So with that, what questions can I answer?
I'm noting that you could all our school colors except gray.
So same thing, like to Kevin's point with the implementation of digital conversion, the establishment of a brand identity, doesn't it, isn't that like an action item that we would reach within a year or so?
Well, since that is an objective that, or a goal, rather, that is in my purview mostly, what we will be doing is establishing our district brand with a rebranding. But that means the implementation of that brand, it then means the next phase is working with our buildings and making sure that we have brand standards that align with the district's standards throughout all 25, soon to be 26 of our buildings. So it's definitely a multi-year process. One of the things that I thought was great that we talked about at our leadership team meeting when we were working on strategic planning is, within Emily's area, we could look at ways that we are using our brand with all of our vendors and the revenue that comes in through those opportunities that could, whoops, help some of the other goals be achieved as well.
Yeah, well, I'm just going through, before I came here, I was doing my update for my work strategic plan. We're in our fourth year, and we're seeing, okay, where have, what have we accomplished? You know, what do we still need to work on? What did we find out? So I want to make sure, I'm glad that you said you're going to be updating these on a quarterly basis, because yes, some of these goals are going to be accomplished. And so then you check them off, but you're also going to find some, oh, this, we've got to take a step back here and rework this, because you'll find that it's not going to work out the way that you had thought. But it does provide guidance, and I don't remember having one of these before. Did you, did we have a plan like this?
I do not recall that we have. I know that back in my previous Olin Tangi years, many years ago, we started with a continuous improvement plan. That's different than it is today, but it wasn't really a strategic plan either. It was some sort of hybrid type of plan.
I explain it to people, it helps you from not having to tread water all the time so that you, you're on track. So I'm glad that we're doing this, because I, like, I don't remember us having a guide like this before.
I think that the, we shared this with our administrative team at our retreat at the end of July, and the feedback that we got was very positive about providing a direction for the work that we do every day. And a goal, you know, goals that are clear and achievable when everybody works together.
Yeah, I'm glad that you took this on.
And the starting point was when, last January, you guys got together and said, here's priorities, you want to see us looking, working on moving forward. So that's where we combined with some of the priorities I had coming in as superintendent three years ago now. So those, where we were with that. I'll leave it with Smith.
Oh, my gosh, an nauseam.
I appreciate, yeah, but that's the first reaction, we talked about that, was exactly what you touched on with that phrase, implement a digital conversion. Is it done when you do it? I think it'll ever be, maybe you can, Jack, you can add some, that's a lot of your area.
So the idea of the digital conversion is it's a comprehensive approach to what can technology do for us? If you think about our district's vision statement, how we can be more efficient, some of the things that go along with the digital conversion are, Todd talked about, digitizing the HR processes, being more efficient, cutting down on costs with paper, how do we get employees processed more quickly so they can start more quickly? We're going to be doing a similar thing with the Treasury Department. Along those lines, it does have to do with devices in schools and infrastructure and professional development, and being purposeful in budgeting and planning how we're going to leverage technology as technology is ever changing. About three or four years ago, we started school, and the Internet didn't work every day for like the first two weeks, because we didn't have enough bandwidth. And at that time, we had never known to study our bandwidth, at least from our perspective. We didn't know that you could measure how many, you know, we knew our student enrollment was growing, and we also knew that the number of cell phones and pockets was growing, but as each cellphone connected with a Wi-Fi spot, pretty soon, it all filled up. So the idea of the conversion is something that we will be able to complete, we hope, in a number of years, whereas mastery of learning is something that's kind of like our mission statement, which is a continual pursuit. We can always do more, because we always want to help kids even more and more. So the idea of the conversion is a, more of a set timeframe, and there's literature around, I think, 12 different areas of a conversion, like I talked about, professional development policies and all that. So we want to be systematic in looking at all of those areas over the next few years so that we don't catch ourselves in that position again where, oh geez, we ran out of bandwidths, you know? So hopefully that doesn't happen. As I look at the news, heck, guy.
It looks great, and how much time went into this beautiful...
I bet this took a lot of time, because Roger and I saw a different...
We saw the...
The rough draft? The rough draft, maybe?
I, there was help with that. I think Jack brings up a good point that I just want to quick add in, that what you see in front of you, that one-pager, is not going to look the same in three years, two years, three years, five years. There will be changes as those items are accomplished. I'm sorry.
For Jack's benefit as well, I do like the evolution of this page from things that I had seen earlier, you know what my comments were earlier. So I like this a lot, I mean, notwithstanding some comments of mine, I understand that you continue to work on, but I think this has gone through a nice evolution.
So comment and question. So the comment is, I'm hoping that what you'll see in the process as well are the crossovers from these four main goals into some best practices and improvements. I mean, because the CIP and the understanding that we're serving students and their families is priority one, we're educating kids, but the sidebar of this is we're also a very big business. And so part of the strategic planning is to also help balance that delivery and the business side, in my humble opinion. The question is, so tell us, if you can, how you're going to launch now, what's your next steps in launch, and what do we intend to do? Or are you prepared? Have you begun that process of establishing what comes next, cart or horse, or something like that?
Well, we kind of already are launching it.
At least what that's looked like.
Our departments have been meeting and doing great work together to come up with the objectives that fall within these goals, and then the strategies. And then, as department leads, as a leadership team, we come back together and we talk about... And then, as department leads, as a leadership team, we come back together and we talk about that. And as I mentioned earlier, there's clearly overlap among all of our areas and ways that we can streamline some of those objectives and determine who's monitoring those objectives. We shared it, as I mentioned, at our administrative retreat and then Mark and Emily will be doing their annual staff meetings at our buildings. This will be the structure of part of the conversation that they get to have with our different staffs and departments out in our buildings to explain why we're doing what we're doing, kind of a mini version of this, what's, what's important to us and how we'll support accomplishing these things. As far as communicating it, we will be widely sharing the one-page, one pager that you have in front of you and we will be using that as a framework for our quality profile. So, when we explain to our community, our constituents, what we're working on, what their tax dollars are going towards, it will be in this framework about our strategic priorities and our goals. And then, as we continue, Mr. Rafe has regular staff memos or emails out just to update our, our family on what is going on in the district and these will be regular components of those updates as well as that quarterly piece. When we go back and review, we will update everybody on the outcomes of that quarterly review.
Ultimately, Mr. Rafe is the process owner here, I believe, so it'll be up to the district leadership team to do a good job of implementing, right?
They did a great job working this, Jack and Krista spearheaded it and did a lot of research on best practices in this planning process and given all the credit and then cross-work between all the leadership team and the department heads to start coming up with those objectives. And then they'll use those to develop their work plans that the leadership team will monitor and I'll monitor on with them.
I think the proof will be in a year after this launch is in the difference of how your work plans change based on what you find, what you discover in this first year of the strategic plan and what that does for efficiency, revenue improvement, you name it. That's what we're trying to get out of this. So, I'm done commenting. Anyone else has any comments? Thank you, Krista.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda, we're going to welcome Mrs. Hatfield back and Mr. Lamb to talk about the Creekside Industrial Park Community Reinvestment Area CRA and Tax Increment Financing TIF. Does everyone have the presentation? Assessments.
Good evening again. It feels weird being at the podium two times in one meeting, but exciting nonetheless. So, I wanted to give you some general information, not only for your benefit, but also for our constituents and our community that are listening to the board meeting about what a CRA and what a TIF are. Those are not necessarily terms that our taxpayers or our community might understand right off the bat. So, as a CRA, it's Ohio Community Reinvestment Area is what the acronym stands for. And it's a program that is an economic development tool that municipalities and county government can use to use property tax exemptions for property owners to renovate or construct new buildings. So, that's, that's what a CRA is and what the objective is of that. A TIF is a tax increments financing tool. It is an economic tool to use for local governments, again, to put in place funding for public infrastructure. So, we're talking about sewers, roads, wiring for fiber connectivity for wireless, for Internet access and things like of that nature. So, that's those two components that are part of this agreement. And with that, I'll let Mr. Lamb take the floor and go through the project that they have before us.
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to speak with you. Mr. Cuckler is here as representative of the development team leading this project. Dave McCurdy is the leader on this project for the private sector side. And I would like to start off before diving into this project. The last time I was here, approximately two weeks ago, I think a question came up on Morpsy population numbers. And so, we have run that down for you. There was some discrepancies between certain numbers as well as Delaware County Regional Planning figures going into 2018. Morpsy will be adopting the approach that Delaware County Regional Planning uses. They feel that that's the best numbers that are out there and we're very happy to hear that. Morpsy decided to defer to our county's numbers and we think that's a huge statement on Scott Sanders who leads the Delaware County Regional Planning Group. So, thank you and I apologize for any confusion that was caused with various population numbers that have been presented.
Thank you for, thank you for.
Happy to. And again, I do apologize for that. We try to be consistent with our numbers. So, before you, as a handout today and my apologies for not having the PowerPoint ready, I had some tech, some technology issues on the way here. What I wanted to do though mostly today was to have a higher level discussion of why we are interested in this type of investment coming to the county, the benefits that we see with this type of an investment and why we think the schools should be supportive of it. Briefly going through this packet, you'll see a site overview showing the Creekside area. That is the 93 acres of land located just to the east of Menards, just to the north of where we currently are. The proposed project is for logistics, light manufacturing, flex space and office development. Again, going to the target industries that we want to see occur within the county. And then zoning's already in place on this site. Oftentimes, as the project is moving forward, zoning can take a while to properly be done and you can lose potential end users in that process. So, we're very happy to see that this is looking an area that's already zoned and ready for this type of development. The project will expand on two roads that currently exist, Corduroy and Green Meadows Drive. It will also include what, an estimated 1.3 million square feet of commercial space. Overall, from a project standpoint, we are looking at 3.8 million on the developer's side for public improvements. That number's not been finalized to the county engineer's office yet, so there could be some change there. Estimated value project of 60 million, up to 700 jobs with payroll of over $30 million. This would be an average 42,000, almost 43,000 annual salary for individuals being employed there. This is important to us because one of the things that we want to see in job growth within the county is higher paying jobs being attracted, diversifying our economic base and being able to make sure that individuals who work in the county can also live in the county and vice versa. So, getting into really what the agreement looks like at this time, we have been requested by the developers to support a 20-year, 75% TIF. This means 75% of the dollars flowing into the TIF fund to help pay for public improvements as well as a 50%, 10-year CRA and then another five years with that, 50% reducing every year. This would result in approximately $6.9 million being collected by Olentangie Schools over the 20-year period of time. If the project was not to develop and the land was to remain how it currently sits, it's approximately $100,000 coming to Olentangie Schools over the 20 years.
Can you repeat that, that last figure?
Yes.
It said 6.9 over 20 years of approved, but what is it just sitting there now?
Sitting there now, it's $100,000 to the school district.
Over 20 years.
Over 20 years. So, we view it as a gain of 6.8 for the school district. County collects 7.3 million. This number is based upon the proposed structure that, of us helping Orange Township be able to address some of the costs that they'll incur with road development in the area as well as the developer receiving a equal 50% share of the TIF funds up until the point that they are reimbursed for that 3.8 million public improvement. At the point that they are reimbursed for their public improvements, those funds would then revert to the county to help pay for the infrastructure that I'm going to be speaking about in just a minute. And that's important because really what we're looking to do with this TIF is to leverage it to get things done for the county residents that are here, namely in this case, Home Road Lewis Center connection so that we have a better east-to-west connector within the center of the county, which is something that we currently lack. If you turn the page, you will see that Home Road Lewis Center connection. Very basic estimate, approximately 25 million to bring this entire improvement to fruition. And that's going from Lewis Center Road, crossing over the railroad tracks with a bridge and then moving through the property that you see here all the way over to 23 and tying into that home road improvement that was done a few years ago. We're very excited about this. Again, we think it will really help address traffic flow within the area. Also, as the big walnut interchange is contemplated, this really creates an east-to-west connector that ties back into 71, which should significantly help reduce traffic that we see in the Polaris area.
So, whereabouts would, so it goes behind what we know as downtown Lewis Center?
Yes.
Correct. Yes.
And then it would connect.
At Pyatt?
Right? I'm, I'm looking at the connection at Lewis Center Road.
Yeah.
Is there a new?
The Pyatt extension isn't there yet, right?
Yeah, there's nothing there right now. What you'll see is that red line.
Oh, because I didn't know they were extending Pyatt north and south.
Right. Is that the intersection that's proposed for the Ovens development?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, that, that will be one of the intersections that feed Ovens.
So, it would come out basically just east of downtown Lewis Center.
Yes.
And that's a stud, that's the backside of the villages of Alum Creek. So, there's a stub there that would have to eventually.
Right, yeah. Because you can see that to your far right.
So, that's going to be a four to five lane road?
In certain locations, I believe it's as much as seven, tapering down to four, I believe, at one point. And seven, I believe, when it ties back into 23. And the reason for that is the various turn lanes that you need at that site, but I would have to defer to whatever the engineering drawings are to.
And there's also going to be a Lewis, Lewis Center Road expansion. Is that correct? East-west?
Yes, there is a proposed. Yes, there is a proposed lane addition as well as turn lanes off of Lewis Center Road. Those, I believe, the turn lanes are in Phase One of that project. When it moves forward, the Lewis Center additional road, I believe, is more in the third phase of that project.
So, but the intent would be to connect this all the way over to 71.
Correct.
So, Lewis Center Road is going to blow up to however many lanes. And then you're going to get over by the dam again and you're going to be restricted on property access from the Corps of Engineers to go past the two lanes that already exist.
Yep.
And you're going to send trucks from here eventually from this development rigs, right? 18-wheelers?
If it develops logistics, light industrial.
To go east-west all the way out to 71.
I would have to defer to the county engineer's office for what we might be able to do in that area.
I think that's essentially where, where it's going to go because what you're talking about is an east-west connector that we don't have to 71 and you're connecting it through what's going to be commercial. So, FedEx trucks, if FedEx ends up being there or whoever it is, it's going to be rolling east-west to get to 71 because it's much easier than going up to 36, 37 and/or south to the outer belt, right?
I, I would say if it develops logistics-oriented uses, then yes, there is an increase in traffic flow. I, I'm not a transportation engineer, so I can't speak to the specifics, but I would say that most likely as the big walnut interchange develops, you are going to see a lot of traffic, both commercial and residential.
Yeah, but you're starting on the front end action, which will create a reaction over time.
Yes. Unfortunately, how development often works is as things build, though we try our best to leverage them to get other projects done, they do create other demands in other areas.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
For orientation, I just want to make sure I understand where the, where the Creekside development is. I'm looking at your map that shows all the road work. Is the Creekside just below the blue line that runs left-right, east-west on the bottom of the road?
Yes.
It's right down here, right?
The black dotted mark shows the roads that Creekside will build, Green Meadows and Corduroy.
So, make sure I had the right spot.
Here.
So, one of the questions that we often receive is why would you provide an incentive package such as a CRA? We've talked about how we use that TIF, the tax increment financing, to offset the cost for infrastructure improvements that are a betterment to the residents of the county and the businesses in the county. A CRA is simply an abatement of property taxes, so very different than a TIF. The reason why we are considering a CRA at this location is because of the competition that we face to secure these types of deals from other locations in central Ohio. So, you can see a list here of those locations that we think are the most competitive with this type of a site. And you will see various incentive policies that have been provided from an abatement standpoint. One of the things that you can see is that our 50% is on the very low end of what has been provided as an incentive. And we think that 50% is good enough to land industrial projects because we know people want to be making investments here in Delaware County.
Any questions? I, I have questions and I want to point out a couple of things. First of all, Dave, you might remember this. It was like before the recession hit, this property was going to be cobblestone, which was going to be residential development with land set aside for a, a school, but it was going to be residential development. You know, all that land where Menards and Mount Carmel is, that was going to be the cobblestone development. That would have really impacted the school district. So, it's good that it's gone commercial. I mean, it, it stopped when recession hit and we lost the land that was going to be there for an elementary school, but we didn't gain any of the houses. But, my question is with this proposal, and just let me say, what I'm hearing from you is that over 20 years, we would gain $6.8 million that we're not getting now.
Well, the model says 25. Is that right? Is it 20 or 25?
Yeah, so is it over 20 years or?
Model I have chose.
It would show 20 years for the TIF with the TIF kicking in over a period of time. So, if it takes five years, then it's 20 years of the life of the TIF coming in. So, 20 to 25 years for you to collect that $6.8 million, depending upon how you look at that timeframe kicking off.
But right now, we're getting $5,000 a year from that piece of property.
Correct.
As it is now. Okay, so when would this kick in? When you get a company that is gonna, you know, gonna develop the site? You know, because if we approve it, you know, next month, when does this kick in?
It starts today, shovel goes in the ground. So, we would want it in place by the end of that calendar year so that the full improvements on that site can be captured.
Okay. Do you have any companies committed?
There are no companies at this time committed.
Okay. And then going to this competition list that you have on here, I don't think it's in here, but is, are any of these where Facebook is going in? I think that's going to the.
No.
Isn't that, is that in the beauty park area?
Yes. And the issue with that is you're seeing a lot of data centers attracted to that area because of the proximity of the tracks to this site. There, it's not competitive for a data center. They don't want to be next to a railroad facility. What I would say too, going to the issue of compensation, moving this to the industrial use will also help hopefully bring more industrial uses to that general area, decreasing the chance of residential development occurring on that entire property, though I am sure because it is Olentangie Schools, there will want to be some residential development in the area.
And that same page about the competition, I was just curious, why is the Greif Office Park considered competition?
Really, we looked at general areas within, are you talking about Greif just up the street? That's not that Greif, it's a different Greif location.
I was going to say, yeah.
Because I would see them as part of the picture.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, there's another Greif Office Park and that's where this was pulled from.
I don't know if anyone else. As well, I talked to Emily about this earlier, that there's a 25% service payments that are not, that are going to be not allocated for distribution under the TIF agreement. Right, there's a 25%. Emily, can you explain to me again, a holdback or something of some of the fees, right? Or?
Fees that remain in the TIF for the county.
Yes.
And we were, I know that, we discussed that we look at the home road, Lewis Center Road connectivity, but the language within the agreement doesn't point to that specifically. So, we had talked about maybe asking for the language to be directed toward an Olentangie infrastructure specifically rather than a general Delaware County infrastructure where it might be put in a different area.
Yeah, I can't speak for the commissioners or the county engineer, but I do believe I'm accurate in saying it is their intention to use these funds for the Home Road Lewis Center connection. I'm more than happy to take that recommendation back and see if that is something that they would be willing to place within the documents.
From a language perspective, I would have, I would be comfortable with like to see as opposed to that money being, going outside. I mean, that's our, you know, it's our dollars essentially. you know, it's our dollars essentially, with all due respect to the city of Delaware, big walnut, or any other place, I think those dollars need to stay here.
And the other guarantee that you have that has to remain within a general area of the TIF is there needs to be a nexus between the project that is generating the dollars for that TIF and the TIF project that is undertaken. So, you have to be able to show a rationale between the two, the development that's creating the revenue source, and then the project you're using the revenues on. But again, I'm more than happy to take that back and make that recommendation.
You should show that, right?
I think that'd be pretty clear.
I always thought that the TIF money that was given up was always used for the infrastructure for the project.
So, you can generally, yes, but what you find is, say you have a major gas line that needs to be replaced, because that gas line can run quite a distance, and it's a contained area, you can make that nexus, cover the needed increase for that gas line, and that may service more than just that single project, but it is a public improvement. So, you have to be able to establish that relationship between how you're spending the money and the project that's creating the money, and that is just how the ORC is stated.
Oh, I have, I, you've talked to the county commissioners, because that was, that's been in the Delaware Gazette, I'm the only one who gets it, I think, in Olentangie, but have you spoken with Orange Township, and what is their feeling on this?
We have spoken to Orange Township. We've worked out a proposal that I think is favorable to their township administrator. I would not want to speak for his trustees at this time, but from the information that's been relayed to me, I do think we have an acceptable deal on the table.
If I'm not mistaken, I think there's two parallel tracks, if you know, going on here, or maybe there's not. So, I'd like to have a clarification on, does one affect the other? The development of the infrastructure, the road system, which I'm really in favor of, and the development of the properties themselves? Is there correlation there? One can't happen without the other, vice versa?
I don't believe that there's a traffic study that says Creekside cannot happen without the improvements that are being talked about for the home road and Lewis Center Road. What I would say is, I do not believe the county at this time is in a place where we could upfront the money for home road Lewis Center connection, so we are hoping on this TIF coming forward, so that we can have dollars coming in that will help us repay any costs that we incur.
So, the decision that always has to be made when these come forward is, you know, do you give up part of potential taxes in order to get this development? But the catch is, do you have another company that's going in there without these improvements? And the answer is probably no, because in today's development age, they're, I mean, they're not going to come in and pay for the infrastructure on their own. That's...
Correct.
We fight with Indiana and Pennsylvania and Kentucky and Michigan all the time over this, now Wisconsin.
Yep.
So, that's what you have to think about, you know? Yes, and I, you hear it all the time, or you're giving up, you're giving up. Yeah, but who's going to come in and pay 100% of the infrastructure needed? In today's day and age, I'm sorry, they're not going to. Those aren't good business proposals for them.
Correct, and the other issue with that is it takes time to go through the review and approval process. Having a site that has the infrastructure already built, has all the approvals in place, and knowing what that is, incentives are, and not having to go through the process of securing those incentives is what attracts companies to locations. I like to say that we have a lot of land in Delaware, we have very few sites in Delaware, and our goal in my office is to change that, to enter into these types of agreements with our community partners, to find ways to position land so that they can become sites and that they can attract commercial investment. And when I was here, last time, I spoke about how we are trying to change things on a development side, be more development-friendly, and we believe this is the type of approach that gets us seen within the commercial community for a good location to make investments.
And all you got to do is look at Dublin, what they've been doing on the west side.
She was just...
And, and not only that, but it's the cooperation with Union County and Marysville, like 33 corridor, all that, all that TIF development.
I just wanted to comment that residents come up all the time and say, can't you stop the residential builders? Can't you stop them? And the answer is, can't, but this is a step in that direction. I really think that residents would be supportive of this idea.
I witnessed the same thing in the city of Dublin, my office has been there for a long time, probably 30 years ago, when it was draw the bridge up. Just not, didn't happen, did it?
Mm-hmm. And growth is coming. We're a premier community to live in, a huge part of that is the schools, Olentangie being a leader of it in that area, and so we know land is going to develop it. Currently with market conditions, if we don't prep sites for development, we are going to see residential development, because those are the projects that can carry the timeframe in which it takes to position a site, as well as the cost to bring the infrastructure to that location.
Yeah, as long as we all understand, I don't want to belabor the point, but, you know, the disadvantage we have over Etna and over Dublin is we do not have the freeway corridors, 33, 70, 71, that allow those companies like this to build. So, what you're talking about, again, is a longer-term development of an overpass, essentially, so you have to have a launch and a landing spot for both ends, that overpass and the acreage, and then the only way to get to 71 is through where our residents live, so as long as we all understand that's in the public record, that there are some disadvantages. I understand what you're doing, I get it, I see the value. You've got a different hill to climb than the other folks, unless you're talking about straight development on 36, 37, and even then, you're restricted west, right? I mean, you eventually, right? I don't know what Delaware wants to do, but...
There's an outer belt for Delaware.
Great. Well, I can tell you that we are looking to do similar-type projects on 36, 37. I truly believe that's a major corridor for economic growth for this county, and that if we can do it right, we will see good diversification throughout that area.
So, to that end, then I'll ask you a devil's advocate question. Is the competition for 36, 37 sites going to impair or impede the ability to develop a Creekside?
I really don't believe so. One of the main reasons for that is sewer along 36, 37 is probably a three-to-five-year plan. Our hope is that the site will be developed by that point, and until you have sewer, you're not really going to be able to move a commercial project forward.
Isn't that what's still killing the northeast corridor of 36, 37 and Sunbury there? That, what is it, North Star, that they tried to...
Well, that freeway access has been a major concern for the county, and we should, why are they pushing so hard for those two additional interchanges? When you think about our entire county and the population, we have one interchange, because Polaris technically is...
Well, Polaris is...
Polaris and 36, 37, we have two interchanges. We're the most populated county in the state with the fewest number of interchanges.
Yeah, that's right.
It's why you see the east-west and north-south commutes being what they are, and as I mentioned when I was here before, that is one of the greatest issues we face as a community, is that commute time more higher than other central Ohio communities, and commuting is a major issue in life, in quality of life balance, and so we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to address that concern for the residents.
Well, for all of you that live up here, I'd like to thank you for your contributions to all of that, including myself, all the congestion and good stuff that happens.
That's right.
We're all victims of our own success, but any other questions for Mr. Lamb and Mrs. Hatfield?
How about hotels? Any hotels on the horizon?
I'm sorry, what was that?
There's no hotels. Any hotels on the horizon? I was just admiring the...
Dublin.
Two new hotels in Dublin.
We are very hopeful that some of the projects going on in Westerville right now with the Renaissance and others will bring new hotels to the community, as well as we would like to think that the 36, 37, 71 corridor, as it secures further development, will not only see redevelopment of hotels, but also new hotels developed.
I guess just in terms of where we are, so we'll go back, get clarification on the reinvestment language, and then once that's it, we'll bring this back for a vote?
Sure, so, yes. So, I think that's all we need. I don't think there's anything else in the other language clarification or issues around the table. I mean, the only thing that the tables we got, so now, is it a $60 million project or a $55 million project or a $40 million? I've seen three numbers in the last week, but...
The most updated sheets I have from the developer show $60 million.
$60 million, okay. That's the number we're going to go off of then. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Hatfield, do we have any public participation session number two regarding action items, discussion, sheets?
No, we do not.
All right. With that, we will go into our action items, and Mrs. Hatfield, if you would please present the treasurer's action items.
Yes, please. I would like to bring forward the treasurer's action items to approve the Union Drive financials, limited appropriations, donations, the wellness service agreement with Mount Carmel, the OASB 457 plan, and the resolution for the bond refinancing.
So moved. I'll second.
Any comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. Berks?
Yes. Mr. Rafe, if you'd bring superintendent action items, please.
Yes, I'd like to present superintendent action items A through D for approval.
Motion, please.
I'll move.
Sorry, Dave, I'll second.
Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Berks?
Yes. With that, we are going to seek a motion to go into executive session to, under Ohio Vice Code, to consider the employment of public employees. So, if we could have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Please. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.